Councilmember John Vaus, can you verify that we have a form?
Mayor, at this time, I do wear a formal uniform.
For being present, I am happy to wear this meeting open. I'll ask Mr. Longwood Waters, our Development Director, if you will please give clarification.
Lord, we bow here this evening, seeing that we used to keep hearing of people with the virus, COVID virus, or new persons every day. Lord, we just ask that you watch over each and every one of them, watch over anyone that's dealing with that, no matter where they're from. Lord, we ask you to watch over this group, watch over our administration, just give us guidance as always. And, Lord, we ask you to allow us to conduct this meeting as safe and to be in your presence. Amen.
Mr. Longwood Waters, can you introduce the law for it?
Sir. What the ladies do declare in the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Before we start this meeting tonight, fully, I would be remiss in my duties as mayor and as a husband to not recognize the first lady of Jasper. You will. So now that I know I won't be in trouble when this meeting is opened, thank you for attending today. Counsel, if you have in front of you our agenda, I would entertain a motion at this time that we adopt the agenda as presented to all.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries. Counsel, item five is an approval of minutes from the July the 20th, 21 regular council meeting. Those minutes have been presented to you. I would entertain a motion at this time that we adopt these minutes as presented.
Motion to adopt as presented.
The second, please. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. For those of you who are visitors, thank you for coming out tonight. I will say that this is a regular meeting of our council, and we do not, that's different from a public hearing in that we don't allow people to address certain items during the regular meeting. Now, it is my practice as mayor, after our regular business is complete, should you have any input at all that you wish to bring to the city, then I will ask you to wait until we finish our regular business. That being said, item six is own business. Consideration and approval of accepting the apparent low bid for the JL White Waterline project, and will ask our wonderful, senior manager to bring it to us, Mr. Brandon Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. You may recall in your packets that were submitted out Friday that you've received some information about the four bidders. Our engineer, Terence C., did provide us with the bid tabulations, so they are actually consistent with the information in the packet, and it's kind of supplemental to what's in your book. But what I wanted to do is just kind of read the four apparent low bids and then provide you with Terence C.'s recommendation through their analysis. There was bids received July the 27th for the JL White Waterline replacement project. And just for additional background, you may recall that that particular line, there had been issues in the past, and then this past spring where the line is approximately 20-plus feet deep, and so that is outside the norm. And therefore, what we had identified was ways to try to mitigate any future issues since that is a volatile area for water. So, Terence C. put together bid packet received July the 27th. There were four bids received, and T. Stanko Inc. of $269,199,40, LCS and Associates LLC $276,460, Cam Contracting SE LLC $316,407,50, KM Davis Contracting Company Inc. $327,984. So as indicated, the low bidder is T. Stanko Inc., Stanko Inc. of Jasper, the $269,199,40. And the bid tabs are in the packet. However, in speaking with the engineer, there may be an issue, this is perhaps not just isolated to Jasper, but the industry in and of itself, in getting the C-900 PVC pipe that we use for our water lines. So if you all approve the apparent low bidder tonight, I would like, as tradition holds, not to exceed, because for about $12,000 or so dollars, we think that if we're not able to get the C-900, then we would be able to hopefully get the ductile iron that we could get more expeditiously so we can get it done. In evaluating the next lowest bidder, based on the prices of the ductile iron, there is about a $500 difference, but the apparent low bidder would still be low. It would just, the margins narrowed, so even if we did opt for the eight-inch ductile iron instead of the 10-inch C-900, this low bid would still stand, if you all were to prosperize us to go that route. But what I would just seek is it not to exceed, if you wanted to say $285,290. Ultimately, their bid is firm at the $269,199. The only variable is if we can't get the C-900. By the time of the matter, we may opt for the $12,000, $13,000 difference for ductile iron.
Sir.
Counsel, I entertain a motion at this time that we accept the low bid for the JL White Waterline, and I'm not to exceed $290,000.
I'm sorry, I'm asking a question, trying to get your attention.
I'm sorry. I'm with T. Stanko, and as soon as we figured out that we was low bidder, we ordered the pipe, and C-900 could be here as soon as eight weeks, and the ductile iron is going to be the first year before we'll be able to get it.
Okay, so you want to go back to the $269?
Well, since they're there, yeah, $269,199,40.
As I said, I appreciate approval of the low bid contract for $269,199,40.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Item B, consideration of approval of the Jeanette Drive test on $12,000 for EXP US Services Inc. for final plant preparation for a wedding, including utility coordination, final cost estimation, construction contract, lending assistance, pre-construction process, and construction inspection. Brandon, if you will, please.
Yes, sir. You may recall, we, within hours of having the bridge culvert collapse back at the end of March, we got EXP services out to assess the damage with us. They subsequently received, they are a pre-qualified engineering firm, GDOT, so we received about $140,000 worth of assistance. But as that calls, you have to do surveying, design, and we are in a position now of the final plant preparation to put this out in the bid. So the hope is that for your September meeting, you'll have some bids to review. And so this is just the final task order to get us to the plant preparation, and then to let the project, and then to have some engineers do some construction inspection.
Thank you. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the Jeanette Drive test order for $12,000.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion is approved. Item C is updates to GALL Drive taps of middle. We had this at our work session and talked about this. I will ask, if you will, Brandon, just give us a brief update of all the pertinent points.
Yes, we did, staff did submit this to GDOT. The application was due on the 31st. It was submitted last Wednesday. The file did get rejected, but then I think it was because the user may have not known how to email me. So I think I corrected the address, and I do believe it's received unless we get it kicked back. So I wanted just to have in your agenda, imprint and electronic, a copy of a few of the visuals. Unfortunately, we don't have the most robust audio video, so I can't really display it for the general public, but it is very exciting that the overall master plan incorporating Stiegall to the Triangle Park area and all the assets in between. The concept and the draft master plan that was created is a really good iteration. There's really good detail associated with the cost estimate. So the final project total that is being submitted to GDOT consideration is $1,855,918.42. The required C-matched 20% would be $371,183. This particular tap project funding would request $1.484 million. So I wanted to go ahead and bring this early, not to presuppose that we will get it, but it is my hope and desire that we will get it. So we start creating expectations with y'all, with the community, that whenever you deal with partners at the federal or state level, there is certain requirements. Lonnie and Adam are going through what's considered the plan development process, PDP, to become LAP certified, and a bunch of other acronyms that Lonnie's just going to get to add to his title and his name. But you will not touch dirt for about 30 months. So even if they were to award it this fall, the 371 required match, it's not going to be required for a very long time. We have sufficient funding in the 2014 SPOS, as well as some 2020 SPOS that would be leveraged with this. But I wanted to make sure expectations were created and met, that when we are seeking this amount of money, it's a very positive thing for the community, but there's going to be patients required, that there's a mandatory 24-month period to do preliminary engineering, environmentalists, etc. So typically, 30 months is usually about the time that you can hope to start turning dirt. So if we get awarded, we'll go through some other resolutions and some other things, and hopefully be very positive, but I just wanted to give you all a little update tonight about that.
And one further point on this is that I believe that we will know by the end of this year whether this grant is approved for us. So this is not something we're going to, even though it's a long process to go through once we actually get that, it's not going to hang around. We're not waiting around three years to see if we get it. We'll know by the end of this year. So at this point, counsel, I would entertain a motion to approve the tap grant process that has been submitted.
Second.
Second, please.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the tap grant process. Any further discussion by council?
If I may, Mayor. Brandon, will you be an affirmative to the press and the public to feel what we hope to do?
That would be my hope, is I wanted to just continue the narrative and provide some visuals yesterday.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And that motion carries, and I am really hoping that it comes to reaching for us. Under new business, is Kebra Littleridge in the audience? Okay, okay. If you would, please come forward. Ladies and gentlemen, Kebra Littleridge has a great serve on our Pickens County Library Board, and I'm going to read to you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would probably, just for the record, need to get an actual motion approval and then the subsequent.
You are. Thank you. Counsel, I entertain a motion at this point that we appoint Kebra Littleridge to the Pickens County Library Board as one of our two appointees, and we're looking for another.
Second.
And a second, please. All in favor, please unanimously say aye. Opposed, same. Thank you. Okay, I, Kebra Littleridge, do swear, raise your right hand, or affirm that I will willingly perform the duties of member of the Pickens County Library Board to the best of my abilities and will take only my lawful compensation. I do further swear or affirm that I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States or any other state or foreign state, which I am prohibited from holding by the laws of the state of Georgia, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States and this state. Please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We will have something to define, sign, and have to dismiss.
Okay, thank you.
Item B is consideration of request of zone parcel 030C001 and 030B061.001 located off of 515 from R.A. and R1 residential to a planned unit development, and the applicant has requested that be tabled, so it will not be considered tonight.
Mr. Mayor, how may I?
Please.
Would it be possible that maybe Mr. Douglas or planning and zoning could inform the public or get our next step in the meeting about our processes that we have in place regarding public hearings and planning and zoning and such? I think it might be helpful to some of the folks who are here possibly expecting this to go.
I'll ask if you do that, if you don't mind, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. So for the council's request, back in February of 2021, the city council approved a new zoning ordinance, and what that means is the way that you deal with land use, zoning. So the process is, there's advertised, there's an applicant, property owner, business owner, whomever, petitions the city, specifically the development departments, Lonnie and Chana, they submit an application for requests for rezonings, annexations, variances, anything to do with property, land use, what you get to do with your property. Each property is assigned a particular zoning district, and zoning just means that you can do with your property this. If you want to change it, you ask the city to change it. So the process, after we receive the application, we have to put it into the newspaper, legal organ, to then advertise for several weeks for a planning and zoning commission, which is a recommendation body. There's a public hearing held on the fourth Tuesday of each month, so the applicants procedurally have to get items to staff the end of the month to be on the, to be advertised, to then be on the fourth Tuesday, planning and zoning commission for public hearing. Subsequently, it's then advertised at the same little article, Tuesday, PMZ, Thursday, mayor and council public hearing, and then they give the regular council meeting of when an item may be discussed or further considered. So on the next two items, there was an actual public hearing before the planning and zoning commission on Tuesday of last week, a public hearing before the mayor and council Thursday of last week. When staff put together the packet of information, the notes or the overview of what took place at those two hearings are included, and then we have the regular council meeting tonight, whereupon there's the action, or whether it's affirmed, not affirmed, or tabled of a particular land use item.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Yes, sir. May I add one, a few things?
Of course.
First of all, I want to make sure that mayor, council, and the public, and I can somewhat speak for mayor and council, but we want y'all to know that we want to hear from you. We do not want to move forward with things without your input because we value it, and it does affect our decision-making process. Depending on the situation, there are laws that protect the property owner, but nonetheless, we are ultimately the decision-making body. And I also want to make sure that the public knows in particular that we have a very good council right now. It's a very strong council. We fully recognize the challenges before us with respect to our infrastructure and our resources, and public safety, and roads, and we make every effort through a long process that Brandon described, that even very often begins before that application process, with pre-planning meetings with developers, where these projects evolve. And when we bring a project to vote, we want to have as much information as we possibly can, based on the legal aspects, the impact it will have on all those things we already mentioned, and our resources. And so take confidence that that's the spirit that these decisions are being made in. And I know it's hard to sit out there and think that. We're trying to establish a new order here, a new culture and community, and we want your input. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anything, Doug? Yeah? I would have to that by saying these exactly right. Many times, what you say will weigh on our opinions, and without it, then we're sitting here just looking at nothing but dry paperwork. It's not that much fun, but it's a lot of fun when you evolve as a community, and what we want to do is help us grow the community that we all want. Thank you. Item C, discussion of request to rezone parcel numbers JA03073.001 and JA03128.
Mayor, I hate to interrupt, but...
I hate that, too.
Item B, I don't know if we did a motion to table the application or not, but the council needs to take.
We didn't do a motion to table, but that was already at their request withdrawal.
Okay. Well, my agenda says applicant requests table, and there's a difference between tabling and withdrawal.
I yield to superior knowledge of the law.
Motion to table.
So, counsel, at this point, I entertain a motion to table. I second. Any further discussion by council or attorney? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, and that motion is now taken. Thank you for keeping me straight. You know, I have to have a group here on both sides just to keep me straight, so thank you for that. So going back on re-discuss, item C is a discussion to request a zone parcel JA03073.001 and JA03128 from R1 to C2 located between 561 and 641 Hood Road, Jasper, Georgia. Counsel, I entertain a motion to discuss. I motion, period.
Mayor, I will be recusing myself from this voting discussion.
Let the records record that councilmember Kirk Rafi has refused to set on this request. Thank you, sir. Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve or deny?
Take a motion, we approve the request.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
We're going to discuss the other one.
Okay, I have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion by council on this motion?
Mr. Mayor, I think from a land use perspective, despite adjacent commercial properties, there are also adjacent residential properties, and I think that based on input received from the public hearings and from the staff report, that this does not meet our land use expectations for this area.
Thank you, Dr. Proffitt.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion, counsel? You have in front of you a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same side.
Aye.
The motion fails. Item D, consideration of ordinance number 231-17 for a request to rezone parcel 0308073, 9.13 acres from R.A. to R3 located off of Philadelphia Road in Jasper, Georgia. Counsel, this has gone through all of our procedures, planning and zoning, and also through a public hearing with council, and at this point in time, I'll ask Mr. Longwood Waters if you can break that to us.
Mayor and council, for the public here, staff makes a recommendation based on the comprehensive plans that the city and counties do and the future of land development maps, and based on the analysis of this application using the standards and criteria found in section 94-246 of the zoning ordinance, staff recommends approval with conditions of the request to rezone property from R.A. to R3, single-family attached. It is expected that the applicant will comply with the following conditions should the mayor and council approve the rezoning request. It is expected that the following minimum standards are demonstrated and meet as requested by staff during the appropriate approval process. If the current proposal does not meet these minimum standards, it is understood that the development plans will be altered to come into compliance.
Thank you, counsel. I entertain a motion at this point, done. A motion to approve. To approve. And I would have a second to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second here as submitted.
I interrupt, and also have the motion include the zoning ordinance is proposed that incorporates the conditions suggested by staff and also changes in order.
So we're going to nimm that motion, if you would, to approve?
All the zoning.
All the zoning ordinance that are in the package, as approved by the, by the, the...
And the conditions.
And the conditions. Any further discussion by council?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a few comments if I may.
Please do.
Adding to the comments that I made earlier, I think a lot of people like to use the term, and we like to use it on council as well, quality over quantity. This project has gone through an extensive evaluation process. The developer has been willing to... The developer has been willing to amend his plans to fit what we consider to be quality. Even though it is relatively high density, the conditions do not allow even the maximum requirement for this density is actually below that. The square footage for the units is actually greater than what our ordinances require. It's a staged development which minimizes the impact to our infrastructure. And there are also things in the ordinance that allow for issues that we may have as it relates to providing appropriate services. So, all those concerns or many of the concerns that were expressed to me in the last few days, this project already was addressing. One other concern was that it would be a real project, and these are high-end townhomes. And the target market for these would not be for real property. So, I just wanted to make sure that the public understands the detail that we try to address as we're bringing these big projects before you. It's new for us, it's new for you, and new for our area, but we are mindful of what the responsibilities that we hold. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item E is a consideration of the job description for the position of development utility specialist and update the pay scale accordingly. We'll ask Brandon Douglas if he will bring this to us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, you may recall that there had been a discussion in the past with regards to utilizing any of the ARP monies, the American Rescue Plan monies. They can be used specifically for public safety, waters, sewer, infrastructure, broadband. Staff had identified a need that the development department works very closely with our water waste water department. And as such, we would like to create a new position which would really and truly help Lonnie in terms of he's stretched thin because of all the heavy hats that he wears relative to development. It's kind of that catch-all department, handles animal control, water sewer, utility locates, trying to track all the different lines, on top of dealing with just the sheer volume of people that are calling in, whether speculative or future applicants for development. Because it's not just, y'all see the rezoning request, annexation request, but if a property owner has a piece of property that they're wanting to utilize and it's existing zoning, it does not require y'all's attention. However, it does require the development department's attention for permitting and/or compliance with certain codes or regulations. So, right now, between Lonnie, Shawna, Ian, Ryan, there's really nobody else. And Ryan is our inspector, Ian fire marshal, Shawna planner, but she acts as administrative assistant as well. We do think that this position is needed because even if there's not the volume of development that is going on currently, there still is room in that department to then just continue being proactive on other code issues that arise. So, we've kind of put in there a job description for your review, and we would just favorably ask your consideration.
Counsel?
I make a motion that we approve the job description for development utility specialists and update pay scale accordingly.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the job description and update the pay scale accordingly. Any further discussion by council?
Is the pay scale included in this?
It would be, we would look at a range between 30 and 60,000 in terms of minimum and maximum.
So, we want the pay scale approved or that we need to approve that?
By this, you're approving the pay scale of 30 to 60,000 for that...
Just want to make sure you're... Okay.
Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. And I hope we're getting a new session. Thank you. Item F is consideration and approval of Resolution Number 2021-07 for the 2021 budget amendment. We'll ask Department Director Beverly Ratlin, if you will, please bring this to us.
I would like to call on the city man here to make a few statements before we...
Okay. City man?
Oh, what a shock. I asked her specifically. You know, you remember, she tries to keep me off the agenda as much as possible so these meetings don't last forever. So, I had to beg her to let me have a chance to talk to y'all. Number one, and probably for the record, Mr. Seifert, even though our numbering system is just for internal, will probably want to reflect, I don't think we've had 17 resolutions. So, the agenda, I believe, is correct, but the agenda background, I think, is incorrect. So, it is Resolution 2021-07. What we're looking for is to look at mending the general fund budget. And part of what the new process, what staff is trying to create is a consistent process of years from now, you'll know that in August, we start talking about budget, and then September, mileage rate, October, November, budget, public meetings, December, budget approval, June, audit, June, July, August, budget amendments, and then we start the process over again. So, the mayor joked with me in 2020 that he was getting a little bit tired of hearing about budget, budget, budget. And I told him, well, it only is in my narrative for about six out of 12 months. So, this is one of those times to where the general fund budget is the basis for which we do our general operating services. Our other enterprise funds or businesses, if you will, water, sewer, sanitation, they are a concern, but the general fund budget is where your property taxes are essentially collected and then expended out. The general fund budget of the whole amount of revenue we receive from property taxes makes up about 30%. So, the 70 other percent varies, fluctuates. So, if you had a household budget and 30% was one stream of revenue and 70% was a whole bunch of others, you'd want to pay attention to that 70% because even though you know that 30% is going to be mailed out in form of taxes, that other 70% varies, and we monitor it pretty much daily, weekly, monthly. Because, for instance, we don't have tonight anything to do with the water or sewer, but I'll give you a little bit of a preview for next month, that the one revenue stream in the water sewer is trending downward of about $300,000. So, that means that's projected to be less at the end of the year than what we had thought when we approved the budget December of last year. So, the amendments is nothing more than a management tool to give y'all kind of an update of where we are financially. What Beverly and Lindsay are going to tell y'all is spot-on. We are very good fiscally, health-wise, but what I have to do is look at for the remainder of this year, if that 70% of those revenues don't necessarily make it, we have to monitor our expenditures and adjust accordingly or else by the end of the year, if those revenues aren't realized and we've just spent thinking that, well, it'd come in, it'd come in, then we may be in a hole, deficit. So, Beverly's going to talk to you briefly about what we've amended the budget to look like. She'll probably even tell you where we're at currently, and then Lindsay will give you an update at the end of the meeting. But once again, this is kind of a precursor to the 2022 budget preparation. August, end of August, department heads will be getting their budgets to look at. I will tell you, there will be a request and a need for additional resources. So, beyond that, I will let Beverly have it. And keep in mind that at the end of 2020 and at the audit presentation in June, we did have revenues over expenditures because, once again, the way that we monitor is to keep tabs on it. This does afford us the chance to do what we did with the salary adjustments, the pay scale adjustments, a couple of months ago, anticipating that if last year we received X revenues over expenditures, then this year we have perhaps some margins and especially some of the unknowns with the ARP.
I would agree. We adopted our budget, we were at 4.79 million on HOCS, I would say, in the venture. I have handed out where we are mid-year and where I think we're going to be at the end of the year. And if you will notice, it shows a use of fund balance, 255,000. I am projecting 35,000 more in revenue. It could be more, it could be less. And 290,000 more in expenditures, and that is from, as you recall, in June, we passed the pay scale, and that was to bring Jasper to market in the area. We have quite a few vacancies. This budget does include those vacancies being filled, depending on when they get filled, it could be lapse involved, it could be, you know, it could end with better than this, but that is at, you know, full blown. We're asking for the Parks Administration Department to have two full-time employees. If you recall, we sent out the bid for mowing services, and we only got one bid, and it was for half, and that was 169,000. So, the adding to full-time is a fraction of that. And the addition of the development and utility specialist increases our payroll. The liability insurance, you'll notice looking through, that we had budgeted a little bit less. And the reason why it came in more is because after January, we realized we had to also get a prior act policy. We had to get a policy for more uninsured motorists and for the cancer policy for the buyer. So, that kind of messed up our budget a little bit. When we got the new year for the property liability, we had a reevaluation and increased our value of 200,000. So, that increased our premium just a little. So, those two things increased our budget for our end-of-year amount of expenditures. If we can have the other funds available at the work session, would that be a point? And the reason why I want to kind of hesitate on water is a lot of, there's a lot of the unknowns. And this general fund that I gave you does not include any ARP money. Looking at 505, there's a lot of question about are we going to get it? And hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, I'll have a little more definition on ARP, how we can use it, where it needs to land in budget. But I feel like most of that's going to land in water. So, I wanted to wait about showing all that just so we'd have it a little bit closer. Did you have any questions about what you're looking at?
Questions, yes.
I could go into detail with the department, but I figured...
No, no, that's not a necessary thing.
Okay.
We do a lot of details. At this point, council, I entertain a motion to approve the Resolution Number 2021-07 for the 2021 budget amendment.
Make a motion. We approve the mid-year budget amendments. Count one.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Item G is consideration approval of alcohol license for Foci Ventures LLC doing business as Walmart sellers at 62 Route Gig Circle. I think this business is just moving, but I'll ask Lindsay Weems to bring that to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, last month, if y'all recall, we asked to start the advertising for this business to change from 916 Old Philadelphia Road to 62 Route Gig Circle. And they have met all the requirements, the advertising requirements, and I'm just asking permission if we can please change their alcohol license from their old location to their current location.
Thank you. Counsel, at this time, I entertain a motion to approve...
Make a motion. We approve the address change for alcohol license for Foci Ventures.
A motion to approve. Second?
Second.
Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And they can go to their new location. Item H, Consideration of Utilizing Leaning Park for Prestige Mothers Group as a fundraiser for Pickens County School System. And I'm going to ask Kimble Brown, if you would, please. Kim, come forward.
First time I've ever been to a forum. We were looking at, we're doing a race in Cherokee County, which is the movement race with Chick-fil-A. And when I looked at it, I thought, they sponsor Special Olympics and the school war down there. So, when I saw that, I said, I want to do that in Pickens County because we're in Pickens County, we've been here forever. What do we have that does something like that? I couldn't find anything. So, I decided, let's do our own event. I would like to make an annual event, and what, if you've ever been in Kent, if you've ever seen zombie fences, they bring the whole community together, they can do main street businesses, they do a big party in the park for everybody. But our goal would be a fundraiser for special needs children of North Georgia, which we would be able to buy the special equipment needed for the classrooms. And I don't know if you got snow hugs for Hudson, but you know, he started pre-k today, first day for him, that's a big day. And I have a special needs child of my own, a lot of equipment's needed, chairs cost like 1,200 to 2,000 dollars a piece. It's a big expense. We like to take all the proceeds that we make from this event and invest it by buying the equipment, all the special things that they can have if they do shut down school again, they can send out stuff to the kids. We just want to make a good fundraiser that we could possibly make an annual event. In that case, we are thinking of having a fun run. We are bringing a new pediatrician to Pickens County. She will be starting with us in October. We'll have everybody out there to meet and greet with her that day. And we want to do a fun run to help bring in some activities for kids to keep them active. So, that's our plan for our zombie events for October 16th at Leaning Park. We're probably going to use Stagall Drive. If Main Street does get involved, that might be a possibility of a shutting down that street. We are doing a night event, so technically, I'm just looking at Stagall Drive as my first event ever up here. I'm just trying for a small one to make it a bigger one so we can put that... can put that into the community.
Okay, now, some of those, if we break that down into different requests, you may need to come back.
I know.
To us, perhaps.
This was my big idea.
Let me know more specifics.
Correct.
The idea itself sounds very intriguing.
Yeah.
And I think beneficial to our community as a whole. So do you have a group that's doing this?
Prestige Medical Group and Peamont Mountainside have already joined together.
Okay.
We will be using Leaning Park, and we would like to use Stagall Drive at this point.
Okay, so, do you have a date on this?
October 16th.
October 16th, that's a fun date, and what day of the week is that?
Perfect. That is a Saturday. We're planning on five o'clock start time.
So Stagall will be closed, right. Ordinarily, that's what you've been doing, is closing down just the downtown section of Stagall. Is that what you anticipate or what?
Yes, that's what I'm anticipating. This is the first time we've ever done it. We're going to keep it a little bit smaller with using the city and bring more of the families into the park, where we can make the run, like the fun run, safe for kids, and that's the plan so far. We just came together about two weeks ago, started putting different vendors in place. We have full intentions of bringing all the vendors of the local community out into the park.
So you're going to have vendors, okay, that's.
Are you going to be utilizing all of Stagall?
Yeah. All within.
All within.
And all within, and do you park on both sides?
Yes.
Interesting.
There'll be a church there in the morning, but after two, I think they're going to be done there, so, but in my mind, I'm welcome to have a church joining us, everybody. I've already stopped to talk with First Baptist in Woodstock and Jasper, they were wanting to join in with us too.
Residences on Stagall, how would?
That is only going to be used for the fun run, it's not going to be used for anything but for the fun run.
So they're not going to be blocked from their property?
No.
Or they don't have to run back?
No. I have a very vast plan for it, but mainly consoled into the park.
Okay, two things at this point, chief level, would you speak to this?
He hopes that he won't have to.
Chief Dogma.
So I'm going to keep it to you.
Just get with us probably about a month before, and we'll come up and do some traffic coordination, and see if you're going to leave any off-duty help, and we'll work to it.
I figured there's R O T.
One further, if I might, Lonnie, would you have any issues about doing this?
No. The residents down through there, if we have closed Stagall before, you know, we just make sure that they know it a week or two in advance, and, you know, just make sure that everybody's aware of it, and, you know, it usually goes over pretty good, but the way she's talking about doing it, it probably won't even need to be closed. I mean, because I would still make the residents aware of it. You're talking about five or six residents.
On the weekends, there's a zero problem.
And I'd still make them aware of it and work with the police department as far as traffic control.
Tara, do you have that on your schedule?
I do.
Okay.
Excuse me, ma'am, when was that again?
October 16th.
It's Saturday, right?
Yes.
Chief, how close to a specific date in October is that?
Fourteenth, my target date.
So Chief is going to commit any of everything on six states now?
Yes.
Okay.
Who's your contact with people?
Don Harries.
Wonder if the marble festival makes the first weekend?
First, first, oh, wait.
First, second.
Apple Festival's the next weekend, so we're making it for a good weekend, it's a homecoming weekend, so we should have everybody in town, it's the cross-country big meet, because I've heard about that, so everybody should meet here.
Counsel, at this point, I would intend a motion to approve this with a couple of conditions. Those mean that you need to know more about specifically road closures and any safety concerns that needs to be addressed.
Make a motion, we approve request as presented with staff recommendations as stated.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both saying, you have it, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Hopefully, it'll work on us.
Item, uh, item I, discussion of Georgia Power's request for a 20-foot vegetative easement throughout the Jasper Circle. And Lonnie, before you bring that to us, I'd like to know if you deliberately put my house on here as the example on this, or if this was just?
I have nothing to do with it.
Yeah, okay, Lonnie, would you bring this to us, please?
Okay, I received a phone call this past week, and a gentleman from Georgia Power asked me if the city would be willing to allow them to come in and mow and cut trees on our right-of-way, trees going down South Plain in that area. And so, not knowing in full detail what he had in mind, he, I asked him to explain more, and what he's wanting to do, or what Georgia Power's wanting to do, from my understanding, is anywhere where they're having high outages, anywhere trees limped or falling and things, that's the areas they're going to look at first, and then they're going to come through and talk to the landowners. Well, sometimes our road right-of-ways lap over into landowners' property, so, you know, the right-of-way goes off from the center of the road. So what they're going to do is, when they talk to the landowners, they're going to tell them about getting an easement, they will be cutting trees, they will be cutting underbrush, anywhere that it's needed and growing up that could cause an outage. And so what he's wanting to know is, does the city have a problem, or would the city sign an easement to allow them, on our right-of-way, to mow and clear trees, or anything that could create a problem in a storm, a snowstorm, ice storm, anything like that? So they're looking at a 20-foot easement. Some of it, we may have two or three-foot right-of-way, and we make the whole 20-foot may be a city right-of-way, but they are going to discuss it with the landowners and get their opinions and approve one of these also, but they just need to know about the city and would we approve that.
Lonnie, could we give them a list of bids that we put out there last time they get cut?
Mayor, if I could, not to just cause any, I guess, confusion, but Mr. Siphon, would the utility in and of itself not have, I guess, prescribed easement or any sort of maintenance easement with respect to their utilities? The only thing that I'm concerned about is, there's an ask, and I always want to partner with our utilities, but I'm also very hesitant that if we get into a situation that a property owner makes a contention that this is theirs, and they're looking at just some GIS data without any sort of deeds or anything else, then they're going to, the utility could then say, well, the city's giving me carte blanche to just come through and clear the vegetation, this is their right of way, and we're just going to do it. And I'm always hesitant to get into that battle as a sovereign entity ourselves, to say, well, the utility is trying to clear their right of way, so to speak, or their own utility, which is a good thing for the property owner. The city in and of itself, we try to maintain our rights of way as best we can, but sometimes the property owner may or may not have a difference of, hey, get off my property. And so we have control over our city crews, to be respectful, say, look, okay, even though we know this is the right of way, you're saying it's yours, you want to cut up to the edge of the road and maintain it, and that's, okay, we're not going to do it, but if there's a tree that's going to do the road, we typically talk with them, we handle it. Is there any concern that you have for us to further explore this, or does any of that make any sense?
Well, all of that makes sense to me. You know, I will say that typically in this situation, as Lonnie said, Mr. Ward said, we do have street right-of-way, and that typically includes more than just the paved street, but many, many property owners don't understand that, you know, they think our right-of-way is just the pavement of the street, and usually, you can have 10 feet on either side of the pavement, sometimes 20 feet on either side of the pavement, that's within the right-of-way, but yet many property owners, you know, will plant grass and plant shrubs, and occasionally plant trees, so it's possible that Georgia Power would need to do some education, and hopefully just wouldn't go out there and take down trees without talking to the property owner. You are correct that most easement, utility easements, do have, again, for lack of a better term, an easement way that's sort of their right-of-way, and typically, for like the power line easement, the power line is typically the center line of that easement area, and then on either side of that power line, they'll have 10 feet, should have 10 feet, because you think about it, you got to get a backhoe in, or, you know, heavy equipment in to do work to repair lines, and or bring them back. You know, to me, depending on the placement of the power line is, there could be a gap between our right-of-way and the power line easement way that a property owner would own, and we really couldn't give permission to do, for Georgia Power to do any work on that private property. So I think we need a good understanding with Georgia Power about what they're going to say in regards to the city, you know, it may be that they're not going to say anything about the city and just approach it that we need a utility easement for maintenance purposes, and leave us out of it, but, you know, I would like to know that, or otherwise, I could see City Hall getting a lot of telephone calls about people being upset about trees that they think they own, either being, you know, radically trimmed back from electrical lines, and or in some cases even cut down, and then you would get telephone calls if, you know, Georgia Power said, the city said, we can do it. And so, you know, it's one of those situations that I don't know that we should be involved because it's them maintaining their easement way, but I want to be sure, you know, that's what they're saying to the public, otherwise, I could see, like I said, City Hall getting a lot of upset property owners calling you and complaining about what's going on.
And I don't want to add to that complication, but if they're bringing out little things like this that supposedly show the property lines, and we're in the middle of that, we're really going to have some issues. So I just don't know. I think that's going to be an incredible complication for us. I don't think we need to go out there and prove some of these property lines on this property.
I know where mine are.
Let me say right now that every homeowner knows where their property lines are, they're going to tell you that.
If I may, there.
Please.
Couple of comments, and I'm not sure what the ultimate goal would be, if you're looking for just a general direction or a motion, but what I will say, as a property owner in the city, I've had my trees trimmed heavily by the entire crews coming through, and I am a Georgia Power user. With that being said, that's already taking place, the city didn't approve that, that's on their right-of-way to their utilities, and secondly, we're going through a project right now that will eliminate the overhead power lines, and so I'm hoping.
Just Georgia Powers. Just Georgia Powers.
Correct.
No, you're them, transformers that have brought down most of the lines.
All right, so I think the conversation lends itself to not our monkey, not our students.
Well, and part of this came through a quick conversation Friday, and the agenda was specifically amended to reflect this discussion item, just to get it out there, because when there are things that, I used to have some involvement with utility, or if you think local government's tough, if you think utilities are tough, you put local government and utility together with power, and all of a sudden, you're talking to a homeowner where there's an L shape in a tree, because a crew just came out and did an L shape. So I just know that there are some property owners who are very possessive of things. They want power, kind of like water, you want water, you want power, I want to help you. But what I want to be able to do is kind of have this discussion with Lonnie, get all y'all's input, so we can at least see clarification, because I think if we were to go back and say, look, we're not opposed to partnering with y'all, but we don't want to get into a situation where a property owner is confusing with the city's letting them or making them, I just want to, you know, as we're continuing to get sophisticated with some things, I just want to educate the general public, and so if y'all are okay with it, we'll just go back, get some clarification, maybe get some language, and if in fact, y'all are comfortable with it, say, look, there may be a little more due diligence that's needed if there are areas of clarification needed. I don't want to go and incur legal costs to do title searches or deed searchers on property lines.
And why do they want to, I mean, what is their point, because they've always done their own right-of-way anyway, why do they want to do, join with the city to do it?
I think part of it is, anytime there's kind of this gap area, that, well, it may fall between the city right of way and then the overhead right of way, and I don't think it's that big of a deal, but I didn't want to get to Tuesday, Wednesday, and Lonnie's looking for an answer to tell to Georgia Power, and we didn't even bring it up. So this way, we can at least say, look, you know, we just need to get some clarification, and kind of like the easements from last year, you know, once we get that, we can work through it and have some broad graphics.
I'd like to have some, and writing, I don't think we know what they want, and I sort of, I'm not sure they know what they want right now.
I'd like to let the council know that I had some issues related to the current project with a couple of citizens, and there were issues around their survey, where their property lines were, where easements were, where right-of-ways were, and the other issue, I think that some of the citizens brought to me were providing the city protection of this, and even though I got good clarity on why we weren't, because it's a power company and they're a sovereign body, and we had no formal agreement to do such, but, and the other concern I would have is, who's going to mitigate these conversations? that they supposedly have, and, because, uh... In one of the cases, I, there has been a lot more conversation than the homeowner let me know, but I had no way of knowing that, so...
And I would be curious if they're contracting it out like they're doing a lot of this. You know, because these people that... Or some of them, I won't say all of them, but, you know, we've had some issues with busted lines and different things, so I think we gotta be careful again, so we're not in the middle of, well, Georgia Power told me to do it, or city told me to do it, or, and they have the conflict. So, I agree with Jim. I think we gotta have more information going on.
Would you... Are you looking for recommendations from a development authority or a certain... I'm sorry, Development Committee, or you... Would you prefer a motion?
It's just a discussion, so there's, there's no action that's necessarily needed. Uh... It can just be merely a, a discussion that's been had, and then, um...
I think we'll come back to it.
Yeah, we pretty much figured out, kind of y'all's... It's consistent with us. Sometimes when we don't know, we ask.
Okay. Continue with more information. So, moving on to the next item, discussion of whether related to vent impact. Randy, will you bring that to us?
Thank you. I, uh... Once again, this is probably the only time I won't be attending more. Beverly and the mayor just... See, there's, there's always ways I can get back into the discussion.
That's it.
Uh... The, uh... Obviously, we've, we've, uh... Continued to move forward with Jeanette, as evident through old business. Uh... Hopefully by September, uh... We'll have that, uh... For y'all's consideration. Uh... We're hoping the cost is gonna stay in that 230, uh... 240 range, and as Beverly alluded to, that would help mitigate our exposure, and especially if Lonnie can get some additional FEMA's money. Then we know we've got 100,000, that we got a couple with Jeanette, we got 140 from G-Doc, that project's done. Uh... Cove, uh... LCS, I believe, uh... We're executing the documents, but there is a, uh... A pipe delay, so to speak. Uh... You heard the gentleman earlier, you know, he's already ordered it. Uh... Not to presuppose that y'all are gonna award it, but if you got a fighting chance to get it within a couple of months, you just go ahead and get it. And if you don't get the project, then you can probably sell it for more than you bought for, but you gotta have pipe. So, I still do not know if it's gonna be October before they start the repairs or their work down at Cove. Even though there's the bypass, there still is the issue of the raw water line or the finished water line going back out Cove that is not repaired. So, we are still continuing to rely on the county to help feed that general area. Um... So, we're just... Nothing we can do. Um... We're just waiting. Uh... I think that Lonnie and David and Lamar talked about some dredging, uh... Down at the Cove. Um... I think weekly, they continue to have their FEMA, uh... Calls, so, uh... It's moving forward, uh... Albeit very slowly, but if we want to try to recoup some monies, 'cause we're looking at over a half a million dollars advantage. So, if Beverly were to have submitted to y'all the work that, uh... Her Lindsay's worked on, it's gonna not reflect all that well, because between just J.L. White, uh... Some work on Jeanette and then the Cove, it's a substantial amount of money. Uh... And so, we're just, uh... Hoping that leveraging any monies from SPOST, the bond money from last year, the ARP, uh... And then just minimal from our, uh... Flood balance, uh... We'll, we'll come out of this healthier, uh... Just as healthy as we came into it. So, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions, counsel? We will move to committee reports. Development Committee, council members, Dr. Sunny Proctor and Kirk Redfield.
I think I probably said enough, and I don't know.
We appreciate your input.
We appreciate you, yeah. Thank you. Street Department Committee, uh... Council members, Ann Sneddon, John Bass.
Now, we're still going forward with designs on the... Off the top of the head. There might be a shift, but it varies.
I don't have anything to add.
Thank you.
Good job.
Administrative Committee, council members, Jim Looney and Ann Sneddon.
Counsel, thank you for the affirmative vote on the budget amendment. Uh... You all know we're gonna hear it again. The wonderful thing is, you kissed Brandon an opportunity to talk finances. He, he loves that opportunity, so, uh... Again, thank you for, for that vote, and, uh... That's all I have.
Thank you. Wastewater Committee, council members, John Bass and Dr. Sunny Proctor.
Um... With respect to our wastewater plans, I don't know that there's been any real update as far as, uh... The EPD approving those plans, um... And, uh... For the benefit of the public, uh... If you don't know, we have $8 million, uh... That we received in grant money, uh... Combined with a low-interest loan that we got from the, uh... USDA to begin that project, and the plans were submitted in early part of the year. We're just waiting to hear back from the EPD about the approval process so that we can let those kids, um... We kind of, we think that COVID may have had something to do with delays, but we're just anxious. We're waiting that. I did talk to David this evening, and I guess there's been some progress in the Gilmore County line. We're, we're getting 110,000 gallons, I think. Uh... So, that's good. It's about a little less than half what we anticipate getting from that, but, but again, we're, we're making progress on that. The, um... And then we've already talked about the J.L. White repair, um... And, um... Which for the benefit of the public is about the hospital. Where in the last five years, we've had a lane break twice in very close proximity. We have re-engineered that, um... And that was what we loaded on earlier. Uh... Let's see, I think that's it.
Yeah, Stan, I only got the work at the Cove done this last week, so, um... Get that to place. So, they've been... Water department, if you want to, how you doing? Good job. Appreciate all of them.
Police Department Committee, council members, Kirk Redfield and Jim Looney.
Uh... As far as public safety, and I believe, uh... Chief Parker may touch on it, uh... Former, our chief passed, and our department made sure to do a special detail, uh... In the procession, so I appreciate their efforts in that.
Thank you, Kirk. Mr. Looney?
Nothing bad.
Financial report. We'll ask our finance director, Beverly Wright, to bring this to us.
I've had my nose in budget limits, and, uh... So, Lindsay agreed to present.
Lindsay?
Um... So, you, yeah, you have your financial report in your packets. Um... You noticed that general water and sanitation are all, um... Revenues over expenditures, so we're doing good. Um... And the majority of the departments are under budget, at or under budget, so we're excited about that, that everything seems to be going good. Got any questions, just let us know.
Thank you, Lindsay. Mr. Mayor? We did, uh... She ain't, they ain't called me on the financial report. You wanna tell them the good news?
Yes, I'll tell them. Late Friday afternoon, we got information from the, uh... Tax Assessor's office that the digest was available on Wind Gap. Well, actually, what they did was they sent out, um... A report that shows the percentage of increase from inflation. In 2020, the report that we got showed an increase of about $39,000. Well, the increase that we showed this year was about $10,500. So, the digest did go up, it didn't go up quite as much as it did before. And we're working with the new software to get information on, of Wind Gap, so hopefully this week, I'll know that all means, as far as breaking.
Okay. Thank you. Development Report, line waters.
Mayor and counsel, in the last month, uh... We've issued 39 building permits for nearly $27,000 in permitting. Uh... We did 114 building inspections, 22 sole erosion inspections, six stormwater, eight animal calls. We've had three meetings with FEMA, which today was really encouraging. Uh... We've been with them, and, uh... They've indicated that we are getting some financing, but it's still not a hundred percent term of what the amount will be, and it will be coming in different stages because they're doing one project at a time. I mean, but they're doing them all at one time, but the, the money will be coming in one project at a time. Like Jeanette, Dr. Waterline at Cove, uh... Dredging, fixing the bypass, repairing it, so it... Today was really encouraging. Uh... We've had 10 planning and application meetings. Uh... Out of the 630 business license, we, all of those have been renewed with this section of about 60, so we, we dropped 10 more in the last month. We've got, uh... Seven new business licenses issued, and Adam and myself have, have classed for ADA with the DLT, so...
Thank you, Lonnie.
There you go.
Police Report.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. C. Jeff Blitzer, for the month of July, responded to 957 calls from 911 Center, investigated 56 motor vehicle accidents, issued a total of 165 citations for following, eight DUI, 96 speeding, seven stop looking, two uninsured motorists, 45 insolferians, two suspended or revoked, two possession of marijuana, and two texting while driving. Georgia State Patrol issued a total of 115, per grand total received court, 208. 49 state warrants were obtained by officers with the following: One burglary felony, criminal damage to property felony, criminal damage to property misdemeanor, two ordering, six possession of controlled substance, five possession of regulated objects, five disorderly conduct, one fleeing attempting to elude felony, nine traffic misdemeanors, one reckless driving, one false imprisonment felony, one possession of a firearm by convicted felony, convicted felon felony, two possession of marijuana less than ounce, one battery family violence, two set by taking misdemeanor, two set by, uh... One set by taking felony, four stop looking misdemeanor, one DUI, one obstruction, one simple battery family violence, one forgery misdemeanor, one stalking misdemeanor, and one distributing material depicting nudity or sexual conduct felony. Insolferians caused, 54 alarm calls, seven disorderly, three harassing, six trespassing, ordering, 33 suspicious activities, 18 domestic disputes and best of the two burglars.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, that's another one, Mayor. Chief Parker to bring us a fire report.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel.
Good evening, too.
For the month of July, the city's fire department responded to 132 murders. Those were no structure fires, no grass and brush fires, low motor vehicle actions, wind injuries, 96 murders, medical response, and current fire weather. Our inspection office looked at two sets of plans and conducted 18 inspections. As Counselman Raffield touched on, retired fire chief TJ Crater passed away late Thursday afternoon. Our department provided an escort for his possession Sunday with an 89 model engine Ford, which he considered his shell truck when he was chief. That went as well as anything like that could possibly go.
Good.
Thank you.
That's very done. Thank you.
And as I have done previously, uh... I invite anyone in our audience that comes forward that has business with this council, and we will listen to you now, so this is your time to rehearse. Get locked, and I would, uh... entertain a motion to adjourn.
So do.